August first, two thousand twenty-three, special school board meeting is now in session. And we need a roll call, I believe.
See who's here.
District one.
Here.
District two.
Present.
District three. District four.
Here.
District five.
Here.
There is a call.
Okay. There is a call.
Over to you, Leonard.
Then you want to call me to read my statement?
Yes, I sure do.
Yeah.
Mr. Superintendent.
Okay. Today's August first, two thousand twenty-three, and in accordance with section two zero zero point zero six five in chapters one zero one zero and one zero one one of the Florida statutes, I am submitting the tentative balance budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, and I'm recommending the proposed millage to be levied. On July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, you approved the tentative budget and millage for advertising. The purpose of today's public hearing is to approve the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four proposed tentative budget and proposed millage rate, and to set the date, time, and place of the final public hearing on our budget. And we have with us our CFO, Rhonda Odom, to share information about the tentative budget and answer any questions you have.
Good afternoon, y'all.
Good afternoon.
And since I've been talking a lot today, and when I had the hour and a half long workshop here last week, I kept losing my voice. In the principal's meeting yesterday, I lost my voice. So I'm starting with peppermint, and I apologize. But I don't know if I'll make it through this with being able to talk. I'm not sick or anything. It's just I'm not used to talking as much as I've talked the last week or so.
Rhonda, can you bend that mic?
Certainly can. I apologize.
Thank you.
So as Dr. Surrancey said, we are here today to present, discuss, and adopt the tentative millage rate and the tentative budgets for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. And normally at this meeting, I provide a lot of handouts, and we go over them. It's a lot of informational handouts. And I do a few at the meeting to advertise that we had last week. But since we called for a budget workshop, I combined all of those handouts into that workshop, and we went over a great deal of detail last week and everything. So today I will go over the handouts that were posted on Board Docs. And I think Susan put a couple of them out there, or put some out there that people can grab if they need them.
Rhonda, can I interrupt? If anybody in the audience or at home wants to see that workshop, it is available. I believe they can go on. It's reported, so they can see that.
It's supposed to be, and I know.
Yeah, with Mike today, it is.
Did he?
It is available.
Okay, good. I know Ms. Wagner had looked for it and couldn't find it, and I told her I would double check on that. So it's good to hear it's there.
Melissa's in there, so if I'm wrong, just y'all let me know.
Okay, good. Okay, so the first thing that I have to do by statute is to discuss the rollback rate. And I think you all have a copy of that. And what the rollback rate is, is the millage rate that it would take to bring into the district the same amount of tax revenue as we received last year, excluding the effects of any new construction. So our rollback rate from the handout is four point seven three one three. And our millage rate for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four is proposed at six point two three oh. So that's an increase of one point four nine eight seven mils from the rollback rate. But if you look at page two of that handout, you'll see it's an increase of zero point seven six seven from the actual rates of last year. And that entire increase of actual millage is attributable to the debt service millage of zero point eight six seven mils that it'll take to service our debt on the general obligation bonds that were voted in, less the point one mil reduction in the rate set by the legislature and our required local effort. So the six point two three oh mils for this year will bring in one hundred and thirty-one point six seven percent of the funds generated from last year's five point four six three. So our tentative millage is thirty-one point six seven percent above the rollback rate. So property owner, you can look at page three of the handout.
Let me go to that, just to make it very clear, because I did have a long conversation with a constituent last night. The state, our FEFP, went down, and we had to increase our local effort because our avalorum generated more.
That's correct.
Income this year than what it did last year. So want everybody to understand, it's not us, it's the state.
Right.
And also very clear that the debt services for the bonds, for the new schools are what is the only increase that we have.
That's correct.
In the tax rate from last year.
Correct. And I'll go into a little bit of that tonight. So if you do look at page three, and I always like dealing with quick, easy numbers in here. So if you look at a property owner whose appraised value remains the same as last year, which is going to be very doubtful because property prices went up so much. But if you look at the line item that I've highlighted in blue for the appraised value of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, and for school taxes, the only exemption that they get is the first twenty-five thousand dollar home state exemption. So that would make them have a taxable value of a hundred thousand. And so that property owner would see an increase in the taxes owed to the school district of seventy-six dollars and seventy cents. This is all attributable to the bonds, because with point eight six seven mils, he would see his taxes for debt being eighty-six seventy, but he would go down ten dollars because of the required local effort going down point one oh mil. And the required local effort, as you mentioned, is set by the state, and we have to levy that in order to receive our FEFP funds, which is over sixty million dollars, because we're funded by the state. About sixty percent of our general fund budget, about thirty-five percent comes from local, and about five percent is miscellaneous items like interest income, indirect from being Nefex fiscal agent, indirect from school food service, and various federal grants that we have. We're allowed to charge an indirect for handling all the paperwork and everything that is involved in that. And each school board that does participate in the state allocation of funds through the Florida Education Finance Program for the current operation of their schools, as I mentioned, must levy that required local effort from property taxes. And each district's share of that required local effort is determined by a statutory procedure that is initiated by certification of our property values of each district by the Department of Revenue. And the only way to levy any more than the amount that's set by the state is if we go before the public and ask in a general election to increase our millage rate, which you can do for other purposes. It doesn't have to be general obligation bonds. Some districts do it just to provide raises for, you know, their employees. If they go out and get the public to approve that kind of thing, they can. They can do it for capital outlay or general operating purposes. But we went out, of course, for the bonds to build the new elementary schools. And so as an additional piece of information that I did bring up at our board workshop, and Mr. Leary alluded to, our property values increased significantly over this time last year. Last year, our property was valued at six point one eight billion dollars. This year, it's valued at seven point four eight billion, and that's after pulling out all the effects of new construction. So this increase in value, as well as the increase in millage for debt service, will increase the property owner's school millage owed. And we had to advertise in the paper as a proposed tax increase. But even if we hadn't had the bond levy this year, and our total millage would have went down that point one at the required local effort, it would have still been a property tax increase, because we would have been at five point three six three mils, one point one lower, but it would have brought in one hundred and nineteen point twelve percent of the value because of the increased property value. So it would have still brought in more tax revenue than it did the prior year by virtue of our property taxes base going up. So I want to talk about the other document that was on Board Docs, and I think is probably out there, and that's the one-page budget handout. And we went over that in great detail in the workshop, and how, you know, I began the budgeting process and what all is involved and everything. But this is, and over time, you'll see the budget in several different formats. At the meeting to advertise, and at this meeting, it's a one-page document. You saw that I sent you an email of just the general fund. That was two hundred and something pages. That's just the general fund, and we have debt. We have several capital outlay funds. We have special revenue funds. We have internal services funds, which is Nefec and our group insurance fund. We have permanent funds, which is the two trust accounts down in Crescent City for those schools down there. One's some money that was donated a long time ago for an oratory contest at the high school. And only the income from that can be used. You have to keep that dollar amount of the stock that was submitted at that time in perpetuity. So you can only use the interest. And the other one's a little bit larger than that, but it's to be divided between at one time the three schools down there, and now the two. And the administration and staff of those schools have to get together and determine the way they want to use the proceeds of those funds. So they send me a note, ask me how much money that they have available, and then they get together and come up with a plan, and I get the money to them so they can use that. So, and then there's enterprise funds, which is strictly all Nefec. So you'll see from that one page, I think I have a copy of it here. Our general fund budget is the one hundred and eleven million dollars, eight seventy-seven, six twenty-four, fifty-one, and going down to special revenue all the way across. And we've got the hundred million dollars worth of bonds and capital. We've got an entire budget, including Nefec, which their budget's pretty significant, is three hundred and sixty-two million, five hundred and nineteen thousand, nine seventy-nine, forty-eight. And this page was posted in Saturday's paper. At any time, any of you and any public can request that I send a printout from any school or department, any fund, the entire budget. I can email it. I can put it in your box or whatever you need. And if you have any questions about this document, you know, please let me know, or we can discuss it once I get through with this little presentation. We did go over, like I said, this document in great detail, and how some of the figures were arrived at. And those that didn't see it, if you want to watch that presentation, but I still plan on sending you all the handouts and everything.
Rhonda, can I clarify? Mike just texted me. He said the regular budget meetings, like we have now, are on YouTube. The workshops traditionally do not go on YouTube, but are available on request. So if anybody wants to request, what would you suggest? They go to our information?
Like a call.
Or just call the district, and we'll be glad to provide it for you.
Sure. I knew he was recording, because he came over here and had me move the microphone a time or two and things like that, because I'm very bad about moving around here, and I apologize about that. So again, that workshop was recorded. I'm glad to find out when Ms. Wagner couldn't find it, that it is available. So if anybody wants to go back and view that, and I have all the handouts and everything, I'd also be happy to provide. And so really, since there's, by law, we've discussed the two things we have to discuss, the rollback rate and this one-page budget document. Today's meeting is to approve the tentative budget and millage rates that were advertised in the Saturday's paper. If you approve it, I'll go ahead and open up the system for schools and departments to start spending their budgets, because right now, you know, the fiscal year started July one, but they haven't been able to spend unless there's an emergency. If there's a grant that was ending, or something's tore up, or something like that, they have an emergency. Once, if you approve this tonight, what we will do is I'll open it up. I'll send them an email. I'll open up the system and tell them that they're able to start spending their budget. And then it'll be totally open up after the second public hearing. And I'll also say that you all, as a board, you've got the right and the ability to make changes to this budget. It's not set in stone. It's just getting this process started. When we have the second public hearing and it's approved, whether there's changes or whatever, once it's approved at the second public hearing, that's when I do the switch. I submit it to Tallahassee, and then it's a final budget. And any changes that are made after that will have to be through budget revisions, and the state usually sends those down. If they reduce our funds, if they increase our funds, it's through official budget revisions that we then have to do here, and we submit those to you monthly, the budget amendments that you receive. So.
So Rhonda, and these are budget-related questions or requests. I'm very clear on this, because, you know, you did such a great job at the last workshop. But could we just have at some place, you know, what the district received from the legislature this year? You know, the sixty million for the high school, the building construction program, and I guess there will be a facility down there. Superintendent, they're going to build something for that program, the building construction in Crescent City. And there are a number of other things that the district, you know, I mean, it was millions of dollars.
And they have not sent me any of that yet. So none of that is in this budget. Only the FEFP funds, even the special facility funds are not in here yet, because until I receive that official document, which comes on like a PICO form. So I know what the total dollar amount is, but they're also funding it over two years. But I don't know if the whole amount will be on there, or if. I'm hoping it'll be here before the second public hearing, and we'll slide it right in, and I'll call attention to that. Because anything that I personally change before then, I bring it to your attention. Because things will happen. Nefec is a business-type entity, and we have to charge depreciation, and we have to do different things like charge compensated absences. So, and we haven't even received those figures from this retirement system yet, as far as our OPEB liability, things like that. So all of the Nefec funds are going to change, but I will call that to your attention. You'll have a new one-pager. You'll also have the big binder in your room that shows everything that's changed. And, you know, we'll go from there, and if you all make changes. So you can either discuss things, if there's anything you're concerned about, or anything you want to add or take from the budget, we can discuss it tonight. Or you can send me emails, and I'll have to incorporate all of that into the second public hearing moving forward. But Phil, going back, I might have interrupted you before you finish, so.
My second question, kind of comment, is that, you know, as I was looking through some of the budget and things, we don't do proviso language, kind of like they do in the legislature, which I'm very used to, which gives people direction on, you know, how they spend the money. But, you know, make sure that they come in within the parameters of what the elected body, you know, wanted or required. And kind of for us, and it's, you know, like IT hardware and software is horrendously expensive. And I think we should have a policy where all entities within the district, you know, work through our IT department to assure that they're getting the best price and deal, and that they're compatible with our whole system. Because I saw this happen at USDA, and we ended up with some real problems when there were kind of separate acquisitions of stuff that the IT didn't know about. Ended up with some problems. So, you know, I'd certainly like to have that policy, unless it's already in place.
Well, we, I mean, it really does, you know, really thinks through that, making sure that stuff we buy is compatible with our system.
It's the bid process, and it would be contingent on the way that things are bid.
Well, I don't necessarily mean him buying stuff. I mean other departments or other division, or whatever entities buying hardware, software, that he doesn't know about, or that's not.
That makes sure it's compatible with what we.
And that, you know, they understand what they're getting and that whole process. Because, you know, I mean, the whole system runs on, you know, electronics.
And I know the board does set policies, so that might be something that, you know, Susan can check with Neola to see. I don't, I'm not sure if we have a policy on that now, because I'm more familiar with all the finance policies. But that might be something that maybe Susan could check into.
It's something we've encouraged over the years, but it, you know, Phil, there's no absolute right now, because school A may want something from Apple, and school B may want something from somebody else. I don't know. But.
We can actually, I mean, we can look for the policies, but also, you know, at our board meeting next week, we can make Lennon available if you want to ask a question, or come see him before the meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
He can explain. But I know he really, that is something that's a major concern, because we don't want all these different systems that are not compatible.
Exactly.
Where you have to, especially if they're obsolete, and you have to go out and try to find parts. So he can definitely respond to that.
Sometimes there's, you know, there is equipment that'll do multiple functions, you know, and I'm not an IT person. Let me just say that right now.
Me neither.
But I do know, I do enough to get in trouble, and my daughter, she is an IT expert. And so, you know, we can get the most bang for our buck with that. And again, make sure that everybody's talking on the same page. So.
If you'll come one day, any day, and I can make sure Lennon's here, we can just have a conversation if you'd like.
Okay. And Rhonda, the last thing is that, you know, if there's anything that you recommend in your crystal ball that you see coming or not coming, you know, so kind of give us a heads up. I think that, you know, obviously the fact that there's, you know, three people from the public here, and, you know, we've advertised this and talked about it. It's been on our Facebook page.
Can I say something? You're the most I've ever had.
Yes, the most since I've been.
It's very sad.
You're not the most, you're not the most that I've ever had in a board meeting. But it wasn't much more.
Well, it might be a little boring, but as for that, no, well, as for that hour and thirty-minute workshop, because I went into so much detail on the budget and how the whole process works. And, I mean, it might not be interesting to you, but it's very, I'm a CPA. It's very interesting to me, you know. I'm sorry, but I'm a nerd. Yeah. They should be. Exactly. And we are one of the taxing agencies that are very limited on what our millage could be. Again, the state sets a certain dollar amount, and the most we can do for capital is one point five. And you can only go extra if you go out before the public and get a vote. Like the board of county commissioners do not have to go out to the public, and they're limited to ten mils max. So imagine if all of us could do ten mils each, you know, what it would be. This is the highest. And there's even, in that workshop that I did, there's even a screen print, or the PowerPoint and everything that's shown. It shows our millage over years and everything, and you'll see probably, you know, our highest millage is close to what it is right now and everything. But we used to be at required local effort. The state had it up at five point something mils, and now it's down to three point one one five. So even with our debt added in, can't remember the exact years, but I spoke to it at the workshop, we're still lower now with this higher rate than we were from like two thousand and seven to two thousand and eighteen. I think that's the years, but don't hold me to that for sure.
It's like you said, even without the bond issue, you have years when property values rise and the required local effort goes up. And we're just fortunate it's not more than what it is.
And I'll say this here, since y'all are here listening. In my mind, if the state would hold the required local effort at a certain dollar amount, but what they do when our property values rise, well, then they're only going to allow us to get so much money. So I've already gotten my first change from the state on our budget. And what they did is, because our property values had gone so much, up so much, they did lower their required local effort by that point one oh mil. But still, with it being lowered, it brought in one point seven million dollars more. So what did they do? They lowered our state revenue, and they increased our local revenue. So I hate that they do that.
It's, that's a situation that we always deal with. The state wants to look good to their constituents, and they force it down the line. But I kind of piggybacking on what Phil said a while ago, I'm thinking about. It would be our desire to certainly everything, not just IT, you know, anything that we bid on. We need to, we need to look, we purchase, do the absolute best we can. And, Phil, I agree. I think it's a pretty good idea. It's a good time to sharpen our pen. I mean, people moving to Florida, property values have increased, and, you know.
If you have that meeting with Lennon, I'd be happy to sit in too and listen, you know, on that.
You know, and people don't understand, I was telling the superintendent, and I got a call at nine o'clock last night from a person I know, a lady I know, but I didn't think we were that good a friend. She called me at nine o'clock, and she was just railing about the budget and, you know, the whole thing. And after I finally got her calmed down and went through it, I have my little page right here and explained the whole thing to her. And then we really got down to what the issue was. She's mad at the Republican legislature. And I said, well, you know what? If you were here at our last workshop, you'd have heard some of us say the same thing, and that we don't have control of that. And so a lot, much of our budget and how we put things together is a function of what the Department of Education requires us to do.
Yes, sir.
And so I want that to be on the record, so people understand, you know, we're doing the best we can under the circumstances that we have to deal with, with both the legislature and the Department of Education.
Yes, sir. Most definitely.
And the money they pull back, they turn around and pay all state debt, you know. And I kind of followed it on television and some of the stuff they're doing. So it's never as it seems, but this is about as clear as it's going to get.
Well, and the one thing I agreed with, Rhonda, is that, you know, if you look at the last twenty years, and, you know, for fifteen of those years, I worked in the legislature representing clients and a couple of quasi-education clients, it does appear that the leadership is wanting to, you know, revamp the whole public school system and create a whole another private charter school system and, you know, leave us with whatever.
Yeah, and I think I sort of voiced that at the workshop.
It's incredibly unfortunate, because there's certainly nobody sitting in this room that didn't attend public schools.
Exactly.
And so instead of helping us do things that we think can help us with students that need more help in doing things in a different manner, their deal is, let's just blow it up, and we'll, you know, things will kind of fall where they may. That's really unfortunate, and, you know, but it's what we've got to deal with. So that's what we'll do.
Well, even when they send you the money, they'll shut you down in the year and say, don't spend any more money, freeze it. And so then we're frozen, and then the state takes it back. So that's not uncommon either.
Well, the good news is the budget, the forecast, revenue forecast for the state is four hundred and eleven million over what was projected. So I don't know what Amy Baker and her economists are doing up there, but they're certainly missing a boat somewhere.
Maybe I'm hearing, maybe we won't have another proration like we did in July.
We will. I don't think.
I hope not, too. Okay, so are there any questions from you all?
Rhonda, if I could just clarify, as we were talking earlier, our vote tonight would actually basically lock in the cap of our, on the millage rate?
Right. If you vote tonight to tentatively approve this, we cannot go higher on the millage rate at the final hearing. We can lower it if, you know, if we so chose and everything. The budget can be changed based on things that'll come down the pipe. And if we miraculously receive more money, which is not going to happen, but the budget can be changed, but the millage rates will be locked in. This will be the max that they can be.
Right. So it's just locked in as far as it can't go higher, but it could be lowered.
Yes, ma'am. Mm-hmm.
Chairman, we missed the public comment.
I do think.
Do you want to open it up for that?
Yeah. And I will say, because Mr. Tim wasn't here a minute ago, there's an hour and a half long budget workshop that I did last week that is very detailed. And it's not showing up on our website, but if you want to request that, the superintendent's assistant can provide that, whether via email or ever how needed. That was very detailed, and I also have a lot of handouts that I gave out there, and an email to me. And you can get my information. I can give it to you, or, I know Mr. Tim has it, can certainly provide those handouts also. The money, the money by law has to go into, either into the fund that bought it, or if we don't realize, know what that fund is from ten years ago, it has to go into capital projects. Capital project funds. And it can only be used for capital purposes, and, yeah.
Rhonda, can we, can we ask them to have a comment come up? Just so we're making sure we identify people come up. Rhonda, have you come up and just identify, and Madam Chair will provide directions there. But we definitely want to hear from you. And Rhonda's here to answer any questions like she was doing, so.
No, I had a question about the property in Putnam County.
I think you want to identify.
Hi, my name is Nadine Karas, and I wanted to know about the property in Putnam County that's under school property, like E.H. Miller. When it's sold, where does the funds go, and in what till is it going under?
And Rhonda, can you respond to that?
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate that. Like I was stating, is by law, when you sell an asset that you own like that, it has to go back into the fund that bought it. And if you do not know what fund that bought it, it has to go into capital projects, which it would have been purchased through a capital project fund anyway, but those change year after year. So it would go into the oh-three-ninety capital project fund. It could only be used for other capital assets, which would be other buildings. It could be land. It could be computer products, anything like that, anything that is a capital outlay. So that's where that goes.
And for clarification, we're not selling the E.H. Miller school or the site. We're just selling the property, correct? I mean.
I think we're building at the E.H. Miller site.
Building.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because it was a sale of the real estate on, on LoopNet, it was a sale of this.
Yes, it was.
At one, at one time it was for sale.
Yeah, well, up to about four months ago, it was.
But it's, it's definitely gonna be the site of our first elementary school.
But, but your question does apply to other school properties.
Yes.
If, and, and the school district has different options, they can donate to other governmental entities, or there are various ways that property can be disposed of. And Rhonda, if you had questions, you could call her, but any school property that's sold will have to go back into the budget she's talking about, it is capital projects.
Yes.
And just for the record, can we get your address as well? Oh, okay, gotcha.
Okay, I think we may have another one, or.
Okay, and we have Mr. Tim, I'm sorry.
Huffling.
Huffling, okay.
Huffling, yeah.
To speak.
Not really speaking, there's a couple of questions that have been percolating, as I've, I'm sorry, I thought it said five thirty and not five oh five. But, in this advertisement, there was some confusion, is, is the levy that you're, y'all are voting on for the construction of the junior, senior high school? Or is that to pay for the bonds that were already, okay. Is it, the way I read it a dozen times, it said you were asking for extra money?
Rhonda can answer that, but essentially, the, our capital outlay will pay the difference in, what, the sixty million that the state doesn't, that that doesn't cover for the new construction for the high school. And all the elementary schools are under the bond.
Yeah, the, the elementary schools are under the bond, and the, and the ones for the high schools are under the state special facility.
And this, this was the extra for the high school?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, I'm, I'm with you now. Okay, and did the fact that y'all are getting about twenty percent more money this year from taxes figure into this at all?
Yeah, I'm gonna let Rhonda, Rhonda, if you can respond to that.
Yes, I'll be happy to respond.
I'm not sure if you caught that part where I was saying a while ago, is when our property values go up, what the state does is they take it from the state funds. We, we do, unfortunately, we do not get to have more dollars. They determine, and in my first calculation, they cut us one point seven million of state funds, but added it to local requirement, because our property values went up. Very unfortunate.
Talk to Bobby Fain about that.
Any more questions, Mr. Tim?
I have a question about.
Yeah, since they're recording it, I think it's better.
Can you give us your name and address, please?
All the schools in the counties that are underutilized at this point. There are schools that are closed, there are schools that aren't being utilized properly, yet we wanna build more schools. Do you foresee the population increasing enough to justify building more schools? I mean, I know St. John's County is exploding, Jacksonville's exploding, Clay County's exploding. We're not really there yet, we probably will be in the future. But, you're building schools, you know, do we have enough students to fill them up? If we have schools that are actually underutilized at this point?
Yeah, and again, our ten-year revitalization plan, the basis of that was the age of our schools. The, the schools that we currently have, on the average, are the second oldest schools in the state of Florida. So again, the idea was not, we were busting at seams in kids. It's just that our facilities were not up to standards, and so that's why we were doing that.
I mean, can we upgrade instead of rebuilding? I mean, you know, I come from the city of Boston. Boston Latin's a hundred-year-old building that's still utilized to this day. And I don't see why we can't upgrade the existing infrastructure.
They were not built like those buildings.
What's that?
They were not built like those buildings.
Well, that's true, you, you got a point there. But, you know, we should look at the revitalizing some of the existing assets that we have before we build more schools.
In the, in the late nineties and two thousands, we, we revitalized schools and put, I wanna say, thirty, forty million dollars in them. And the wear and tear, and to this point, the, the state, and, and, you know, who doesn't wanna patch something up and try to use it? But when you've got the second oldest schools in the state of Florida, and you're, and, you're, you've trying to encapsulate, you know, materials that you don't, you know, you want removed, and asbestos remediation and stuff like that, the state was very pleased that we were able to convince people locally to, to pass the bond issue. So, you know, I think the special facilities money is kinda like a reward on top of that as well, so, that's.
But as we sell.
I don't know how they do it in Boston, but.
But as we sell some of these ancillary properties, that money, like Mrs. Odom said, would go back into our capital funds, which would be used for maintenance and upkeep of these facilities, you know, for years to come.
I mean, do you foresee the part, the school population increasing within the next ten years? It probably will, but by how much?
Well, again, that's, you know, we don't have the exact number, but the information we're getting is that we're anticipating, because of, you know, things going on around us, that in, in our lower property values compared to neighboring counties, that we're expecting, you know, somewhat of an influx. But again, that number, we can't put a, you know, an exact number on there yet.
Because we all know, as nine B goes south of Green Cove, it's all gonna start heading south.
It's already coming that way, but the people, people with a, well, that's, we went through the, the things earlier with a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar home in St. John's County, have already sold out for four hundred thousand dollars, and they're buying homes in Putnam County. And we have the Cross Florida Greenway that runs through Putnam County, so we've become the designated park for the state of Florida. And I love rural Florida, and it's going fast, but we can expect with, you know, the Bass Pro Shop coming in down there in Satsuma, you don't know what's gonna spin off, you know, coming across the river and dipping close to Putnam County line in Green Cove, people are starting to buy environmentally sensitive land, the development rights, you know, to trade out for future developments and stuff. So that's, it's a, I don't look for us to just grow overnight, but if you can see the traffic in Putnam County.
It's just going calm, for sure.
What's happening, it's miserable.
University of Florida, Bureau of Business and Economic Business Research does population projections for all counties, and, and our population projection is, you know, anticipated to be moving to the three to four percent range next year. So, now with that, will all those people that move here have kids? No, but a lot of them will. So, but I think it's like the superintendent said, you know, we want state-of-the-art schools so that we can attract, you know, and keep white collar workers here, you know, that will invest in the county and not live in St. John's or Clay or, you know, Flagler or something. So ultimately, that's what this is gonna do. And I think, you know, the new high schools, the new elementary schools are gonna be a huge asset for us in attracting businesses to come, you know, to the county.
Right, thank you.
I would add one thing to that also, that was kind of important to me in, in looking at all of the, the expansion and building of schools, and that's the safety factors, that the old designs in these schools. I, I know the elementary school I went to, you know, the whole class was nothing but windows, you know, floor-to-ceiling. That's not as, in, in today's world, that's not as desirable, unfortunately. And there, in fact, I just saw on the news this past week that there was an armed person outside of a, a school, and because of their, they were so locked down, he could not access that school.
We have to be built to, to security standards now that are prescribed. And we're looking at twelve thousand homes being built in, just adjacent to us in Flagler, and right across the line here in Putnam, out there around the ten thousand acres. So, it's coming.
Yeah, oh, we know that for sure.
You know, but it's, this is more of a question right now of getting schools, like Phil said, that we can hold our people here that wanna raise their kids, graduate from high school, they want a job, and, and they don't wanna have to move to St. Augustine or whatever.
Like, St. John's County built a bunch of schools, and they're still using portables because they grew fast.
There's no way to keep up with it, there's no state income tax in the state of Florida.
Imagine the money growth in St. John's County, so it's good to be ahead of the curve somewhat.
Right.
When we started this, I think it's very important to, when we consolidated the schools, it's because we had schools that were underused, they had many student stations, whole wings that didn't house students, but we still had to keep all of, all of that going. And so you still had administrators at schools that, you know, had three hundred students, and, and so that was part of it, to get everybody, where we maximized the schools that we did have.
Economy of scale, so we can operate efficiently.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, all of you.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm back. I do have a question about reusing schools. Since we wanna talk into Democratic green energy, why aren't we reusing schools? I'm gonna be honest with you, I have a second property in Hillsborough County, in Tampa, Florida, downtown Tampa, I have, we have a second property. We lived there half the time. Hillsborough County has one of the oldest high schools in the country. It's a hundred and fifty years old, they just redid all the building and the roof. The elementary school year is seventy years old next to it, so you're telling me you can't revamp a building? And it's all glass windows, I can even bring pictures of it all. These are city schools with inner-city kids, within the most dangerous types of environments these kids are living in and stuff, and there's shootings and stuff, yes, there is. But you know what, they're making it do, and that's Hillsborough County. Our mileage is at twenty percent, twenty, twenty point, twenty point mileage, that's a higher mileage. So, and they're making that work, but the mileage, actually, most of our money's not going from schools, it's going to our police and other departments. But they're making those schools work down there, and there is a lot of money in Hillsborough County and Tampa, Florida. That is the third populated city people wanna move to in the world right now. But how are they making it work with old buildings? Well, we can't.
They don't, they don't have any choice.
No, they have a choice, we have money to buy new schools.
Well, the, the money, not so much the problem, it's, it's the land.
They have land, we have actually extra land, actually, we actually have three properties they actually purchased for the future, for later on. And Chamberlain High School, which is actually north of, in northern.
I'm outta line, I, I don't know what their problem is.
Chamberlain High School, which is Middle Hillsborough County, it was actually in big disarray. And last year, I actually know about four people that worked as contractors on these high schools, and actually, we did the whole high school, and it's actually back up to snuff. And it's an old high school from the seventies. It's nothing fancy when you drive by, but you know what? The houses around there are one point five million, three million dollars. You're telling me those people that have big money, that live in a three million dollar home and complained about a nineteen seventies high school? No, they're not. I hate to say this, people that are making in a hundred and fifty thousand dollar salary and you're white collar, are gonna put their kids in private school. That's just how it works. It is, it's just how it works. So, living in a fantasy world, thinking people are gonna come here to put in new schools, that's craziness. It is, when you think about it. Because people that have money are gonna put their kids, that's just how it works. And if you're looking at northern money or western money out of California, one hundred percent private schools. I'm watching it in, I lived in Hillsborough County, I have a property for twelve years there, I live up here, and I'm watching it, the whole thing going on, and that's a lot of money down there. People with big jobs, doctors, lawyers, big companies, big corporations. And they're okay with putting their kids in a hundred-year-old public school. So why are they okay with it?
Well, you know, it's, it's, you know, we had architects and engineers look at our schools. Construction is a whole different ballgame. You know, the way they built those schools.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Were very different. They may be in a, you know, than what ours were built.
Well, I think the Robert School is actually identical to Chamberlain High School design, actually, in Hillsborough.
Which one?
Robert, your Robert Middle, we used to be at Roberts Middle School.
QI Robert?
No, not, no, the old one, the old one, back in the day, Robert, Jenkins, Jenkins. The Jenkins is actually the same design, actually, I think it has almost the same architectural design, actually, as Chamberlain High School, off of Waters Ave in Tampa, Florida. So, I mean, that's what I'm saying, you have to, like, honestly, I feel that sometimes you have to get architectures and ideas from other areas, pull them. If, if Hillsborough County used architects to help them, pull, see what their brain is, pull them, see what they have to say.
We did, we used architects to look at, and look at all our buildings.
I mean, all you can do is try, I mean.
Every school district is different.
Yeah, of course, absolutely.
Different, and, you know, so we did what we.
I just feel that you need to use what you have sometimes, being green. If you wanna be green, everybody wants to be this whole new green thing. Well, you can't throw away something if you wanna be green. You reuse what you have and make it do, and make something better out of it. That's what being green is, it's not just throwing a solar panel on the roof. That's a bunch of crap, as far as I'm concerned, it's a part of my French. It's about doing it three sixty, from A to Z, all the way to the solar panel. Making sure you're using all your desks, reusing everything you can if you wanna be green. And honestly, the federal government gives discounts on school districts that are green. It's LEED, L-E-E-D. So, I mean, that's what it is. So that's what I'm trying to figure out, why aren't you reusing what you have sometimes?
All of our new schools will be L-E-E-D.
Yeah, but you can reuse the old ones and have L-E-E-D, and also get, like, you can show, why don't you not show the state of Florida, hey, we're a green county? Let's show, people actually would like that better. I hate to say, I'm a millennial, I'm a millennial, I'm thirty-seven years old, my, my other half is in his forties. People our age wanna see green, we wanna see reused stuff. Millennials don't wanna see new, I hate to tell you that. We wanna see reusable stuff, we love that, we think that's cool, that a building was reused, an old building, what a cool thing, our kids go there, that's cool, we went there. That's cool, they do, they wanna see that. I mean, I don't have children, but if I had a child, that'd be cool, they could go to Jenkins. I went to Jenkins, that's cool. But you know what, I think that's kinda, you're taking away a lot of a, of a kinda like thing, you're giving like a new world to kids, but like, I think you could use the, all the old buildings and make it like new again. I do, it's possible, other places are doing it.
It's like my dad used to say, the horse is out of the barn, and we're, we're going down the road.
That, that's, that's fine, but you know what, people like me, I will take my money elsewhere and buy a house elsewhere, raise my children elsewhere, because I want them in a, maybe Hillsborough County, because they have old schools, and it's cool for us.
Good luck with that.
You gotta think of that, you gotta think of, people think like that. Especially my generation, absolutely, and social media runs that generation. And we all talk, and we all talk.
And we did propose a ten-year revitalization plan and a bond issue.
This, this whole thing can change, yeah.
Yeah, that's, I just wanted to bring that up, because it's just very interesting, seeing other areas and other parts of the state that are doing it, and they're making it work. And those are inner cities, I mean, and there's money coming in those places, like big tax dollars coming in. But thank you for your time.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Any other public comments, cards?
Any others?
I didn't know if she was.
Madam Chairman, are we ready to move to a motion?
I do believe we are.
Rhonda just came up here, though.
Yeah, it was just basically, if all the public comments are done, we need, need to call for a discussion and roll call vote, so, on each mileage rate and each fund's budget.
Are we ready to proceed?
Ready.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we adopt C one, the tentative required local effort mileage rate of three point one one five mils.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion from David Buckles to adopt the tentative required local effort mileage rate of three point one one five mils, and a second from Ms. Holly Pickens. And do these get?
Any further discussion, and then we'll do a roll call.
Okay, any further discussion?
District one?
Adopt.
District two?
Advertise, adopt, excuse me.
District three?
That was Sandy.
That's Sandy.
Oh.
I've been in.
Oh, okay.
Just here.
Okay.
Yeah, five minutes.
Okay.
Okay, so let the, reflect that, Ms. Gilliard had joined the meeting, five minutes into the meeting, and she's calling in her vote from back there. She, district three said adopt. District four?
Adopt.
District five?
Adopt. Madam Chairman, I would move that we adopt C two, the tentative discretionary mileage rate of zero point four, uh, seven four eight mils.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Phil Leary and a second by David Buckles on the tentative discretionary mileage rate of zero point seven four eight mils. Is there any discussion?
District one?
Adopt.
District two?
Adopt.
District three?
Adopt.
District four?
Adopt.
District five?
Adopt.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt item C three, tentative debt service mileage rate of zero point eight six seven mils.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Holly Pickens to adopt the tentative debt service mileage rate of zero point eight six seven mils, and a second by Phil Leary. Any discussion?
No.
District one?
Adopt.
District two?
Adopt.
District three?
Adopt.
District four?
Adopt.
District five?
Adopt.
Adopt.
District five?
Adopt.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt item C4, the tentative capital outlay millage rate of 1.500 mils.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Holly Pickens to adopt item C4, tentative capital outlay millage rate of 1.500 mils, and a second by David Buckles. Any discussion?
District one?
Adopt.
District two?
Adopt.
District three?
Adopt.
District four?
Adopt.
District five?
Adopt.
Madam Chairman, I would move adoption of C5, the tentative total millage rate of 6.230 mils, which is a thirty-one point six seven percent above the rollback rate.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Phil Leary to adopt the tentative total millage rate of 6.230 mils, which is thirty-one point six seven percent above the rollback rate, and a second by David Buckles. Any discussion?
District one?
Adopt.
District two?
Adopt.
District three?
Adopt.
District four?
Adopt.
District five?
Adopt.
Okay, moving on to section D.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we adopt D1, tentative general fund budget of 111 million, eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-one cents.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by David Buckles and a second by Phil Leary to adopt the tentative general fund budget of 111 million, eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-one cents. Any discussion?
District one?
Adopt.
District two?
Adopt.
District three?
Adopt.
District four?
Adopt.
District five?
Adopt.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion that we accept item D2, tentative debt service funds budget of 6 million, 337,473 dollars and eighty-nine cents.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Holly Pickens and a second by David Buckles to adopt the tentative debt service funds budget of 6 million, 337,473 dollars and eighty-nine cents. Any discussion?
District one?
Adopt.
District two?
Adopt.
District three?
Adopt.
District four?
Adopt.
District five?
Adopt.
Madam Chairman, I would move to adopt the D3 tentative capital projects funds budget of 126 million, 578,602 dollars and thirty-four cents.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Phil Leary to adopt the tentative, item D3, tentative capital projects funds budget of 126 million, 578,602 dollars and thirty-four cents. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
And that was seconded by, uh...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, seconded by Ms. Holly Pickens.
Hearing no further discussion. District one?
Adopt.
District two?
Adopt.
District three?
Adopt.
District four?
Adopt.
District five?
Adopt.
Okay, item D4?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, we adopt item D4, tentative special revenue funds budget of 53 million, 298,989 dollars and forty-eight cents.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by David Buckles and a second by Phil Leary to adopt item D4, tentative special revenue funds budget of 53 million, 298,989 dollars and forty-eight cents. Any discussion?
District one?
Adopt.
District two?
Adopt.
District three?
Adopt.
District four?
Adopt.
District five?
Adopt.
Madam Chairman, I would move that we adopt D5, the tentative internal service funds budget of 36 million, 243,689 dollars and forty-six cents.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Phil Leary and a second by Holly Pickens to adopt item D5, the tentative internal service funds budget of 36 million, 243,689 dollars and forty-six cents. Any discussion?
District one?
Adopt.
District two?
Adopt.
District three?
Adopt.
District four?
Adopt.
District five?
Adopt.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the tentative permanent funds budget of 137,012 dollars and sixty-six cents.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Holly Pickens to adopt item D6, and a second by Mr. David Buckles, to adopt the tentative permanent funds budget of 137,012 dollars and sixty-six cents. Any discussion?
District one?
Adopt.
District two?
Adopt.
District three?
Adopt.
District four?
Adopt.
District five?
Adopt.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the D7, the tentative enterprise funds budget of 28 million, 46,587 dollars and fourteen cents.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Holly Pickens and a second by Mr. Phil Leary to adopt